I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, June 4, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call role, starting with Council President Kritzler.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Pride Month. Whereas in recognition of Pride Month in June, the city of Redmond celebrates and honors the LGBTQIA+ community and their achievements, history, and ongoing struggles to live as their authentic selves. Whereas in June 1969, a courageous group of Americans rose up to protest the violence of marginalization they faced in what became known as the Stonewall Uprising, a series of protests in response to police harassment and discrimination in New York City's gay community. This unrest was a turning point in the LGBTQIA+ rights movement. The following year in June, the first Pride marches were organized to commemorate the anniversary of the uprising. Whereas during Pride Month, we honor a movement that has grown stronger, more vibrant, and more inclusive with each year. Pride is a celebration of generations of LGBTQIA+ people who have fought bravely to live openly and be true to who they are. Whereas many of our fellow community members, family members, neighbors, business owners, students, and coworkers contribute to the enrichment of our city and are a valued part of the diverse fabric of our society, it's important to recognize and appreciate their perspectives and lived experiences. Whereas Pride Month is a time to celebrate the resilience of the LGBTQIA+ community and their hard-fought victories to advance acceptance and equality, to think about and better understand the daily challenges concerning the intersectionality of racism, ableism, misogyny, homophobia, and transphobia at schools, hospitals, and other spaces. Whereas we join the call to action ensuring all LGBTQIA+ community members receive the fundamental rights of liberty, free speech, and freedom of assembly, we must remain dedicated to the continued fight, standing together, united, to protect and build on our progress toward a better, more inclusive, and safer future for all. Now therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month. In Redmond, Washington, it is an intercultural city in which all people are seen, heard, and valued. We honor and celebrate the LGBTQIA+ community, affirming the city's commitment to eradicating all forms of prejudice, bias, and/or discrimination, and like to invite up Axton Burton to accept our proclamation.[184.76][184.76](APPLAUSE). I'm going to take a picture, and then we're going to take a picture, and then I'll allow you to speak. Let's get that way just a little bit.[198.34][198.34](MUTTERING) Yeah, maybe we should... It's you and me switching. You're too tall. Sorry. Is there such thing as too tall?
No.
Okay. But for the picture.
We practiced this ahead of time.[216.34][216.34](MUTTERING).
Thank you so much for stopping us. Can I leave this with you? Feel free.
As all of you know by now, my public speaking is always a bit anxious, so thank you for your patience, and it's lovely to see all of your beautiful faces. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Axton Burton, and I am the Executive Director of Pride Across the Bridge, a Redmond-based nonprofit dedicated to serving our diverse 2S LGBTQ+ community. This organization was not created out of fondness of forming a 501(c)(3), but out of the necessity to legally serve our community. I'm deeply honored to be accepting the City of Redmond's Pride Proclamation for 2024, and since I've received this last recognition in 2022, much has changed, both in my world and in our community. As an openly queer business owner and resident of Redmond for the past nine years, my partner and I have cherished living in our studio apartment under the ARCH program. Recently, we've received a notice of extraordinarily high rent increase, and legal, threatening our ability to remain in our home. Some of you have been kind enough to stay in contact about this imminent threat. This concern is not isolated to us and reflects a broader issue facing our community that damages and tears families and communities further apart. Rising AMI, paired with unmatched HUD numbers, continues to push lower-income individuals and families, including advocates for marginalized communities, out of their homes, businesses, and communities. This negatively impacts their access to educated medical care, safer schools, and stability. In 2022, the King County Regional Housing Authority found that more than 23% of unhoused populations self-identified as LGBTQ+. Considering the increased threats to our safety and openly queer individuals, from schools to libraries to medical providers, it's understandable that many in our community feel unsafe to openly identify, especially when our housing met is not met. Halfway through 2024, the number of openly identifying queer unhoused people is likely higher now. From my partner, James, and I, the reality is stark, and following our rent increase in July, we are unsure if we are able to live in Redmond anymore. Many of the 2S LGBTQ+ communities face not only housing instability, but financial instability. As we face further challenges, especially with the pivotal changes coming in November, most of our community members are losing their homes and seeking refuge where they can, often in unsafe places or leading to damaging habits. I'm incredibly grateful for the leadership shown by this city and remain hopeful for our future. Thank you again for the quick approval of the Plymouth House project. Thank you. However, I am also terrified of losing my home, my community, my business, and my family. I urge each of you to reflect on the basic human needs we often take for granted in this day-to-day, project-to-project world. Individuals and families in Palestine are also currently under relentless genocide, losing their homes, communities, businesses, and families. And while we have the privilege to sometimes swipe away or put things off that may not be imminently impacting those around us consistently, as leaders of our community, please continue to actionably and transparently work and listen towards all vulnerable groups, including Palestinians and the 2S LGBTQ+ community. Free Palestine, thank you.[434.00][434.00](MUTTERING). Thank you.[436.00][436.00](APPLAUSE).
I'm just waiting for Chip to put the...
Yeah, give me just a moment. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from an eighth-grade Stella Scola student team regarding their Future City project.
Mayor Burney and Redmond Town Council, thank you so much for having us here tonight. My students have had an outstanding eighth-grade year, and I am so proud of them, I nearly burst. Tonight, they're going to present to you what an extraordinary eighth-grade year they have had, so without further ado, and sticking to our time limit, I want to introduce my tech crew up here, Tanya and Lila, will be taking care of the PowerPoint, but our speakers tonight, we have Sophia, Hutch, Sania, Yilin, Hassan... Hassan, let me say that one more time, and Alicia and Sarth. So thank you so much, and without further ado, I'm going to let the students take over because they are rock stars.
Our eighth-grade year was an experience that will live at the forefront of our memories. After progressing through struggles of previous years, we were finally able to focus our energy towards building our future and making the world a better place.
Throughout our eighth-grade year, we were always asked to take a step back and think, what reputation were we making for ourselves? How did our actions impact other people? And how can we lead others? Being part of this classroom is not only about the Future City and National History Day competitions, Lincoln Douglas debates, or other significant projects, but also about how we can be impactful members of society.
We learned these skills through project-based learning, which taught us valuable knowledge about our core subjects, but also important life skills, such as teamwork and conflict management. Our experience in eighth grade was marked by collaboration, resourcefulness, creativity, and especially leadership, the essential skill needed by young leaders of the future.
And we are proud to present one project called Future City that combined all those skills, pushing our limits sky-high. And this project is where we had to create a model of electrically-powered cities that would power our future cities.
We were able to collaborate and present our ideas professionally in front of engineers and respond to real-time questions as if we were members of an actual city council, much like all of you are doing to meet your goal of Redmond 2050. We were able to push past our limits that made us afraid of presenting in front of
We have not just learned to create electrically-powered future cities. In fact, the Green Gladiator team, which was from our class, have won the regional competition to reach the national competition.[630.82][630.82](APPLAUSE).
National History Day was a project that taught us to work under immense pressure and empowered us to showcase a variety of skills, such as responsibility, independence, and project planning. We were encouraged to dive deep into the depths of the past and examine controversial moments in history.
We also had to make many important decisions throughout which could change the course of the project. For example, picking group members or choosing to work independently. We also decided on many efficient ways to present the information while incorporating many different perspectives.
During NHD worktimes, we also learned to write effective emails to experts on the topic and conduct proper interviews. This major project helped us discover more about ourselves and society. NHD forced us to navigate through many different struggles and also taught us how achieving our goal is much more... Meeting our goal is much more achievable when you enjoy what you're doing. The skills needed for this project will follow us into the future and lead us to success.
We learned about spreading awareness and the importance of informing people about relevant causes. Through many... Through many attempts, we were able to discover that people best respond to both technological and physical aspects of information.
Through an assignment called Poetry Out Loud, we learned how to freely express ourselves in a passionate manner. We also learned how to perform and express our emotions professionally to engage an audience and make them relate with what we were saying. We also learned how to master the skill of accepting failure and how to get up and try again. Through this project, we found our voice both inside and outside of the classroom.
Through Lincoln Douglas debates, we learned how to discuss our perspectives in a constructive way. We acquired the skills needed to state our ideas with evidence to back them up and to form opinions based on well-rounded facts. Additionally, we learned how to state our thoughts in a convincing and professional way.
Throughout these projects and opportunities, we learned how to present in front of a group of people while speaking eloquently. Through countless rounds of trial and error, we now have a sense of academic standards that will help prepare us for high school and our professional lives beyond. It was not only the work, but the mix of collaboration, time management, and academic standards that led to innovation, creativity, and eventual triumph.[792.11][792.11](APPLAUSE).
Yeah, thank you all. That was pretty amazing, an astounding eighth-grade year. I am very excited to hear about all that. That was one of the ages I used to teach, so it's exciting to see the future in all of you and everything you've accomplished. We'd love to take a picture with you and our council over by the flag. It'll just take us a few minutes to get organized, and then we'll take a picture. And, council member.
Yeah, just as a point of personal privilege, I would really love to just say how proud I am of this eighth-grade class. Hassan is actually my brother, and when, you know, Ms. Ronning Larson, can we please give her a round of applause for, you know, bringing the students here?[846.32][846.32](APPLAUSE). When she suggested the idea of, you know, the students sharing their work in alignment with Redmond 2050, which is what we're working on this year, you know, I was just incredibly honored to have the opportunity to invite them here. There were some students that didn't present, so I do want to just really quickly run through all of the students' names because I feel like everyone deserves to be recognized. So, Tanya, Lila, Sophia, Hutch, Sania, Yilin, Hassan, Alicia, Sarth, Thomas, Daniel, Vincent, Grace, Alicia, Anna, Allison, and I hope I didn't forget anyone who's here. And then there were a lot of students who did not join as well today, so thank you all so much.
Thank you.[886.06][886.06](APPLAUSE).
Mayor Burney, do you want all of the students over there, or the presenters? Once again, congratulations to you all. That's amazing.[1088.73][1088.73](MUTTERING). The next item on the agenda is a presentation on the state of health care from Evergreen Health. Chief Operating Officer Chris Bredesen has joined us today.
Good evening, Mayor Burney, City Council, and our guests here. It's really a pleasure to be here on behalf of Evergreen Health. I'm Chris Bredesen, Chief Operating Officer. I have a Redmond address personally as well, so happy to really be here to present to the council and bring greetings from Evergreen Health as well as an update. We'll have our slides brought up in a minute, but one of the first things we're going to show is our Board of Commissioners, and we have two that live in Redmond that represent... We have a seven-member board, two of which reside in Redmond and one in Woodinville.
I think we're trying to get the slides up, just how...
Are you in the teams? Are you shared? Select the tab or the window. And then just watch it. Oh, it's right here. There you go.
All right, so we'll go to the next slide.
That's your full screen, so... Yep.
Sometimes you have to unshare, go full screen, and then share again.
All right, what do we do? Well, it's like... Sorry. You say it's that way. Well, if worse come to worse, we can just go with it if everybody's comfortable with that. Except that, it's not... But you're not even regressing. Then back out. Back out, unshared, and then watch it. Can you get... Can you close your PowerPoint? And then relaunch it because you're stuck. Unshare and get out of teams, and then just show PowerPoint. All right, so this is our Board of Commissioners chaired by Virgil Snyder.
On the left, Jeff Cashman and Norman Seabrooks are the two that live in Redmond and represent this area on our commission. We have two districts, actually. The one in the bottom, left-hand corner, that's outlined in green, that's our King County Public Hospital District Number Two, and that's... We are in that district right now. We also have an affiliation with Snohomish County Public Hospital District Number One, which is our Monroe Hospital, and that's in the upper big geographic area, but much smaller population. We have a number of facilities, including our flagship hospital in Kirkland, our 354-bed hospital, which serves the majority of the East Side. You can see that we have about 4,500 babies that are delivered every year. I think that's the second-highest amount in the state of Washington, so a lot of babies born there. About 16,400 admissions, 12,500 home health patients. That equates to, because patients are under care for a long time, usually on home health and hospice, that's about 2,500 people per day that are receiving care out in the community on behalf of our very large home health and hospice service. We have two emergency departments, including one right here in Redmond and Bella Bottega, and one in Kirkland, and eight urgent care centers, including one in Redmond. Fifteen-bed hospice center. We have a large employed medical group with about 380 to 390 physicians and advanced practice providers. We have 12 primary care clinics, including two here in Redmond, and 40 specialty practices. So I have a pretty big presence. Coming in specifically, again, to summarize for Redmond, we've got our freestanding emergency department and urgent care in Bella Bottega, and we have diagnostic imaging there as well, and two primary care locations. I think a number of you came to the opening, the grand opening of our Redmond Town Center a year and a half or two ago, and... Which has been very successful, by the way. And we, in 2023, spent about $23,000 in sponsorships for organizations based in Redmond, and we are... We do have a board seat with Stephanie and Liza, I think serves with some of you on that one Redmond board. So we are a public hospital district. That's different than a lot of the hospitals in Western Washington, which are 501(c)(3)'s. We do receive, or more like a school district, where we do receive tax dollars to help support health care on the East Side and throughout our district. We'll talk more about that in a minute, but this is an example of the chart. We get about 1.87% here in Redmond for a typical household is the portion that comes to support Evergreen Health and the public hospital district. Benefits of a public hospital district: We are governed locally, and so decisions made here by our elected board, they really consider the community as they make those decisions. The impact on the community is very, very important to them. And your... All voices matter because you elect the commissioners. Like I said, they're publicly elected. There are seven commissioners, and they serve six-year terms. And then the funding helps support some of the services that we offer, and we would not be able to offer them if we didn't have the funding. So we're really pleased about that, and I'll show some of those here. We have some youth mental health programs in the schools. This slide should also have Lake Washington School District, where we provide some services, caring for seniors in senior centers. Social determinants of health, we're looking at ways that we can impact things that affect health care, which is a very big determinant in how people heal and how they have access to medications and different things. So we're looking at that and addressing that through our community health care access team. And then end-of-life care. We know that that's a sacred time in the lives of people, and our hospice team and volunteers, and the many volunteers that work with us are... Do a great job in helping families through that situation. This title of this talk is about the state of health care, so I would be remiss if I didn't say that it's been challenging the last couple of years. So in 2022, hospitals in Washington State, not our hospital alone, but throughout the state, lost $2.1 billion in operating revenue. And that was impacted largely in part to very high increases in wages, wage inflation, and traveling nurses and shortage of staff, and with lagging reimbursement. So it was $1.74 billion in 2023, so a little bit better, and 2024 does appear to be off to a better start, thankfully. And so wages and staff increased about 16%, and reimbursement didn't come anywhere near that. So drug prices, other supplies have gone up considerably as well. So that's the challenge that we find ourselves in, so we're especially thankful for the tax revenue that we get to help us continue to provide some of the great services that we're able to provide. Speaking of the services we provide, we're really proud of this. I'll call this our trophy slide. We are highly recognized throughout the United States. We are, on the left, I'll say, a top-50 hospital. We're really proud of that, and we have been for the past three years. So of all the hospitals in the United States, we have been ranked as one of the top-50 hospitals by health grades. In the middle, there are some special areas that were called out as number one, or number two, or number four, and specialty areas there, and you probably can't read all those, but just know that we're really proud of the number of areas where we are ranked highly. But we always know there's room for improvement and are constantly trying to improve. We have special certifications over on the right with, both in Kirkland and Monroe, around heart and stroke. And Leapfrog is an organization that looks at safety in hospitals, and we've had an A grade for 11 quarters straight. CMS is the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and this one is actually the hardest one to get. We have five-star... We have five stars and have since the beginning of this grading system. It's the highest you can get. We're, I think there are only two hospitals in the state of Washington that have five stars, so we're very proud of that. We partner with our community in a number of ways. In addition to our seven board members, we have community advisors. So we have about 50 or so community advisors who are friends of the hospital, who are interested in what's going on there, and they come and meet five to six times a year with us, and we bounce strategic ideas and concepts off of them, get their feedback. They also are ambassadors for the community, and we really value their input on things that we're thinking about. So we have several that represent and live in Redmond, and we're very thankful. A number of those eventually become board, board members, so it's a good way for them to learn a little bit more about healthcare. We have our employees volunteer, our leaders specifically, put in a, last year it looked like it was just over 1,100 hours of volunteer work within the district. We have community sponsorships of about 110,000 a year, and we attend a number of community events, and you'll see some pictures in a minute. And then we really care about local relationships. I'm here tonight. We have lots of opportunities to interact with chambers and rotary clubs and different organizations within our community. This is us out in the community in 2023. This is in the picture in the upper right, we have Rick, and he's, and he's actually in a couple of those pictures. So we're really proud of the work that we're doing in supporting our community and really doubling down on being a local organization. This picture we love because it shows in 1972, someone had a dream in a, I think what was a pasture on the left, and that's when Evergreen General Hospital was born. And you can see the picture on the right where we are today in terms of growth. That's just on our Kirkland campus. That doesn't include the many, many other sites that we have throughout our district and also in Monroe. So we're really proud, but we know that access continues to be a challenge for patients, not just in our area but everywhere. And, and so we are always looking at how can we continue to expand care and provide more avenues for people to access care? And so we're pretty crowded on this campus and pretty full, operating near capacity. So the challenge we have is how do we get the capital to expand in the future, for future needs of our community? And we're, that's something we talk about a lot and plan for, and probably will be back at some point to talk to you about some ideas that might come to fruition if we can find the funding for it. So with that, I will stop and see if there are any questions from the council.
Well, thank you so much for that. Happy to have Evergreen as part of our network of healthcare here. Are there any questions? Council Vice President.
Thank you. I was really interested to see the part about end-of-life care, palliative care, and hospice care. Having been through this recently myself with a couple of family members, interested to hear what sort of follow-up care do you provide or do you provide for family members experiencing that?
Yeah, we have a pretty good grief counseling program, and that is something that we do offer for family members during, you know, the time that the loved one is dying and then also after, follow-up care.
Great. Thanks. Good to know.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, COO Bredesen. It's great to have you and Evergreen back again this year. One of the things that we took away from last year's touch base with you all was the bed and staffing shortage that was really paramount at the time. I think at the time, we were told that, you know, a great census would be 70% a day, and you were running in the high 90s. So I just wanted to check back on the status of things today. It's really helpful for us to know what residents can expect when they're interacting with your system.
Yeah. Good memory. You're right, you're spot on. The ideal census is to have some, what we would call empty chairs within a hospital so that when we have time to turn over a room or move patient from one level of care to another, so 70% is ideal, and we do generally operate closer to 90 to 95% in our acute care areas. We have more capacity in, you know, pediatrics and OB and rehab, but for the acute care beds, we do run at higher capacity. So we are working on a lot of throughput things, like how do we turn rooms over more quickly? How do we discharge patients that don't need to be in the hospital? So I think at that time, we had a lot of patients who needed to go back into, let's say they came from a skilled nursing facility and they needed to go back, but because maybe they had had been in the hospital with COVID, they wouldn't take them back, or maybe that facility was short-staffed as well, and so they weren't taking patients back. So we had up to 70 patients at one time that actually didn't need to be in the hospital that could go back. So that is better now. So now we're closer to probably 20 to 25. There are some guardianship laws that changed in Washington that have also made it very difficult for people who didn't have that paperwork done ahead of time. It's a long process to go through. So the patients that don't need to be in the hospital, getting them in the right place, that's improved. We also have improved our length of stay. So if a patient was there five days and now they're there four days, that's a 20% improvement in capacity. And so we're working on initiatives to really streamline the throughput and making sure that we're responding to patients' needs in a timely way so that they can get back home or wherever they want to go.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. Any other questions this evening? I don't see any. I just want to thank you so much for, once again, coming tonight and sharing this. It's great to see things starting to ease up a little bit for the hospital. I know that there has been conversations about wall time for ambulance service and trying to help people through the emergency room, and I appreciate that Evergreen has many spaces where people can go to get assistance versus just going to the Kirkland campus in particular. When my kids were little, I might have gone to the Evergreen Emergency Room in Redmond just down the street here a few times, but it was always great, wonderful service, and I'm just so grateful that you're part of our community. So thank you for that. Look forward to hearing from you next year, and always, you know, wonderful to see such high ratings. This is a fantastic hospital.
Great. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here, and I look forward to coming back again.
Great. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Council members generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayor, mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. And all comments must pertain to the City of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. And written comment has been distributed to the council, and no one signed up to speak remotely this evening. So with that, we have seven members from our community who would like to speak to us. We start with Amandine, Dennis La, I'm going to say this wrong, LaRocque, Ernest, Dennis LaRocque, and then Matt Hines, Alex Zimmerman, David Morton, then Bob Yoder.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Amandine, and I am a sophomore at Redmond High School. I have come before you twice already this year, on May 7th to voice my concerns, and on May 21st to listen to the city's plans. Unfortunately, I have concluded that the decisions being made are not in the best interest of Redmond's residents. The decision to proceed with the Plymouth Supportive Housing Project deeply concerns me. This project, without adequate regulations on drug use, threatens to make Redmond an unsafe place for current residents and future generations. Moreover, evidence from similar projects like Health Through Housing in Overlake shows that a significant portion of units is designated for regional referral, potentially bringing, bringing homeless individuals from other cities to Redmond. According to the operational agreement for Health Through Housing, it states, "35% of units will be designated for and filled through regional referral. The remaining 30% of units are undesignated and it will, and will be prioritized for local referral. However, these units may be filled through regional referral if local referrals are not available." While it is crucial to help those in need, we must also prioritize the safety and well-being of Redmond's residents. Increasing the local homeless population by bringing in individuals from other areas could worsen the problems we face. Additionally, during the May 21st meeting, there was a discussion about increasing tourism in Redmond. How can we expect tourism to thrive if Redmond becomes known as an unsafe place plagued by drug issues? Tourism would undoubtedly benefit local businesses, but before we focus on making Redmond attractive to visitors, we must ensure it is a safe and enjoyable place for its residents and students. Redmond residents should always be the top priority. Currently, people rarely say, "Let's spend the day in Redmond. It'll be fun." Even our own residents often go to neighboring cities for shopping and dining. If this new building brings more drugs into Redmond, it will discourage families and children from spending time here. Redmond will lose its family-friendly atmosphere, and our schools could see an increase in already existing drug-related problems. This will drive people away from our community. Councilmember Nueva Camina made a profound statement at the last meeting, saying, and I quote, "I want to speak directly to the courage that it takes when we are doing things for the first time, knowing that there's going to be things where we are going to look back and say, 'Yeah, we could have done this differently.'" Please, for the future of Redmond, make decisions you will not regret. Make decisions that will be remembered positively by the whole community. Thank you.
Next, we have Dennis, excuse me, Ernest Dennis LaRocquette, then Matt Hines, then Alex Zimmerman, then David Morton, then Bob Yoder.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ernest. I'm a sixth grader at Redmond Middle School. A few weeks ago, I spoke about the new permanent supportive housing building planned near Anderson Park and Redmond Elementary School. I still think it's a bad idea, and it'll make our city unsafe like Seattle. Not long ago, I went to Redmond Town Center and saw lots of empty stores with "For Lease" signs, but there are also brand-new buildings with empty storefronts. Why? Maybe businesses are worried about our city changing too fast. I understand that helping people is important, but why put this building right downtown? It might scare away businesses that want to open shops here. Imagine opening a cafe and seeing drug users and dealers in the streets. Not a great first impression. I believe in helping others, but can't we find a different spot for this building? Maybe somewhere quieter so it doesn't hurt our downtown businesses. Businesses bring jobs and life to our city. If they leave, Redmond won't be the same. Thank you for your time. I know you heard me last time, but I hope this time you'll actually listen.
Next, we have Matt Hines, then Alex Zimmerman, then David Morton, then Bob Yoder.
Does my time start now? First of all, this is a public meeting, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. I just have a few comments that I'd like to say. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Matthew Hines. My purpose in being here tonight is I'm here to demand the council rescind the land transfer decision to grant land to the Plymouth Affordable Housing Project. Before I get into that, let me introduce myself to the council and the community. In 2019, 20, and 21, I petitioned the council members repeatedly that the King County prosecutors, the Redmond Police Department, were using lawfare against me after I was attacked at 24-Hour Fitness and filed a complaint with the police department. Once the prosecutors in King County, most likely with the federal urging, found out I'm a candidate for United States Congress and that I support President Donald Trump, they began a campaign of terrorism. I'm here to-
Mr. Hines, I, if you would need to re, Mr. Hines, if you would take a moment, I need you to s- Mr. Hines, I can give you back your time, but you cannot be promoting candidates. I can give you back the rest of your time, but you cannot be promoting candidates either here locally or nationally.
I'm not promoting anybody. I'm telling you why they persecuted me, because of my candidacy. And you're supposed to be a free and fair people, and I don't even want to talk about the story right now, but-
If you can, if you can, if you would, if you would not talk about any of that piece of it, I'm happy to give you your time back. Thank you. Thank you. You have a minute 50 seconds.
Joseph Conrad, the author said hell is the absence of reason. Now that we know who we are dealing with, I want to voice my adamant objection to opening this Plymouth House, which was rejected in Kenmore because it offers no housing to seniors or veterans like myself. I don't have time to explain to the council the insanity and horror of putting a housing project for homeless and drug addicts next to an elementary school or at least half a mile from it. And it seems odd that anyone would have to, but after my experiences with the City of Redmond, I can assure you, these people are dead-set on turning this community into an unsafe nightmare where the criminals run rampant and no one, no one, not even our fine police, are safe. My advice, why don't you change the name of this town to Gotham, where the only Batman is a criminal waiting to smash the heads of innocent people with a bat, which happens like daily now. People are dead. My wife went to catch the bus. There was a body lying next to the street about three months ago. So I respectfully ask that you rescind the Plymouth Housing Project before your Plymouth Rock lands on all of our heads. Thank you.
Next, we have Alex Zimmerman, then David Morton, then Bob Yoder.
Is working?
Yes.
Zig. Zig Hail, my dirty damn Nazi fascist hound. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak to you guys about something what is, I know this happened in America. This is surprising. I wait for this for 20 years when I speak everywhere. You know what it means, from Tacoma to Everett. So what has happened right now, last week? It's something what I cannot imagine, so this exactly will be happen after 250 years. What has happened in New York right now, you know what it means?
Point of order. The speaker needs to speak to an item of city business.
Yes, I was getting to that. Mr. Zimmerman, we have changed our rules. In order to speak to our council, you need to be speaking on city business, and so far you have not mentioned anything pertaining to the City of Redmond. I will give you, I will give you the rest of your time back, but you need to speak to the business of the City of Redmond.
Exactly. I will speak about you. This is exactly what I speak about. About you. Exactly. Before I speak to you, I need to understand what is, I will deliver it to you. So what has happened right now, we come to something what is very critical. Is this exactly what is I want to tell you? We come right now to what is I call, call me Nazi fascist republic. You know what it means? What is involved all Democrat, and you are Democrat, you all Democrat. Is this a problem what is we have? It's a fundamental problem. You understand what is I want to explain to you? And you lady, interrupt me all the time. I know this. I don't understand when you are Democrat-
Yes.
Point of order. The speaker needs to speak to an item of city business.
Okay. Thank you. That would be great. Mr. Zimmerman, I'll read to you, the definition of city business is considered something germane to the ongoing and regular operation of city and/or topics which would routinely involve the government of the City of Redmond. So if you, if you can speak to that, I can give you the rest of your time back.
Your business. It's all your business. What are you talking about? This is exactly what I come to conclusion before I speak for this minute.
Mr. Zimmerman, I-
All are fascist. All of you. Interruption is a trait that is used every time. She uses it the first time.
Mr. Zimmerman, I can give you your time back if you want to talk to the business of the city.
This is a point, so you are fascist, real fascist. This is a problem. This is what is America have right now, to call it Nazi fascist republic.
Next, we have David Morton, and then Bob Yoder.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm David Morton. Redmond's Critical Aqua for Recharge Area 1, or CARA 1, is vital for replenishing the city's groundwater, making it crucial to protect CARA 1 from activities that pose contamination risks to 40% of Redmond's clean tap water. In order to maintain groundwater purity and availability, which is crucial for drinking water, irrigation, and ecological balance, Redmond's CARA regulations prohibit the following land uses and activities within CARA 1. First, vehicle towing yards that store vehicles on permeable surfaces. Storing vehicles on permeable surfaces can lead to hazardous fluids like oil, gasoline, and- and antifreeze seeping into the groundwater. These pollutants make water unsafe for consumption and harm ecosystems. Second, metal recycling facilities with outdoor storage and handling activities. Metal recycling often involves handling metals that can leach toxic substances into the soil and groundwater. Outdoor storage and handling exacerbate this risk, leading to contamination with heavy metals and other hazardous substances that are difficult to remediate. Third, hazardous waste treatment, storage, and disposal facilities. Storing and treating hazardous waste poses risks of accidental spills, leaks, and improper handling, leading to severe groundwater contamination. These substances can be toxic, carcinogenic, and persistent in the environment. Fourth, golf courses. Golf courses require substantial amounts of fertilizers, pesticides, and herbicides. These chemicals can runoff and seep into groundwater, causing nutrient pollution and introducing toxic substances harmful to human health and wildlife. Fifth, sand, gravel, and hard rock mining, and mining of any type below the upper surface of the saturated groundwater. Mining can disturb large areas of land, increasing sedimentation and pollutant release into groundwater. Mining below the saturated zone can directly affect the aquifer's structure and water quality, posing significant contamination risks. And finally, injection wells. Prohibiting injection wells in Redmond's CARA One is crucial to prevent hazardous substances from directly entering and polluting the drinking water supply. By prohibiting these activities in CARA One, Redmond aims to protect its critical groundwater resources from contamination and depletion, ensuring a clean, sustainable, and safe water supply. These proactive prohibitions promote and safeguard public health, ecological integrity and balance, and thereby help to ensure the long-term economic stability of Redmond's future. Thank you.
Thank you. The last person from the audience that signed up to speak is Bob Yoder, but Mr. Zunbrunnen, did you intend to speak to us tonight? Okay, I'll add you to, after, I'll have you go right after Mr. Yoder. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob Yoder, Redmond, Education Hill neighborhood. I didn't come here really prepared to say very much, except that, first of all, I'm glad that Evergreen Health is here, their our community-owned hospital, and I appreciate the care they give us, and I hope we support them. I have been in communication about certain public notice issu- situations, a couple, and I've been in touch with a couple of councilmembers about it in email. I will be emailing all of the whole body, as well as one of the mayor's employees that's very much involved in a project. I can't think of anything else. I'm glad I'm here instead of watching you on TV. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Craig Zunbrunnen.
My, I'm a long-term Redmond resident from July tenth nineteen seventy-seven, and for thirty-seven years, I commuted to the University of Washington different ways, but commonly driving on Northeast Twenty-Fourth. Most of you got a copy of it, I see. I made, I'm good at making mistakes. I made another mistake on it. My proposal is very simple. For all these years, if you know Northeast Twenty-Fourth, it's got a steep, steep hill, a very steep hill, and I probably dispersed a fair bit of asbestos with my brakes on the old days, because there's no way going down that hill without using the brakes. That problem is somewhat modified now that I drive a Prius. I guess I generate electricity. But still, it's very hard to go down this, this steep hill between one hundred and seventieth and, and the, all the way down to, well, most of the way to the, to the parkway, without exceeding the thirty mile an hour speed limit, without riding, riding the brakes. So my proposal is very simply to just increase that during the, for the Redmond section of Twenty-Fourth from thirty to thirty-five miles an hour. And I have a map that you have shows that would amount to changing a total of eight signs, six standalone thirty miles per hour, and two that are associated with the meters there. I'm just curious, I don't know, have any idea, but I'd be surprised if there aren't a lot of readings above thirty miles an hour coming, coming down the hill. For comparison, I, and I did make, corrected a mistake I had made on this. Northeast Fortyth is a common street I also use, and at least between one hundred and forty-eighth and Belred Road, that's a thirty-five mile an hour road, and it's probably because it's constrained a little bit, some places you're down to really forced one lane with the turns into Microsoft Campus and so forth. Whereas the Redmond, the port, the Northeast Twenty-Fourth that I was talking about, has, you know, much wider, and during that whole section, there are no private driveways that egress on, onto Northeast Twenty-Fourth. And that's all, just a suggestion, and I think I heard rumors that there's some sort of review that's going to be taking place on whether, on the whole speed limits and so forth, both some to be raised, some to be lowered, a lot to hopefully stay the same. That's all. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be polled? No items to be polled. There is a, an ordinance, I will read into the record, ordinance number three one six seven, an ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, approving the final plat of Rosewood Court pursuant to RCW fifty-eight seventeen one seventy and RZC twenty-one seventy-four zero three zero, and establishing an effective date. And this is a, I'm going to do a roll call vote since we have a remote attendee. This is a roll call vote, starting with council president Critzer.
Aye.
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 And that passes seven to zero. Thank you all. With the passage of the consent agenda, we have a new Lodging Tax Advisory Committee member who will be sworn in at this time.
How will we swearing you in? And I will read the oath, and then you just say I will or I do when we're done, and then you'll sign the sheet, and then we will, and then you'll go shake hands. So, all right. Raise your right hand. Do you, Rashad Canaan, having been duly appointed to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee of the city of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Redmond, the laws and the Constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America?
I do.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead and sign right here, and I do the rest of it out. Sorry. I do the rest of that.
Okay.
And go ahead and shake hands.
Our next item of business is a staff report for Redmond Twenty-Fifty Planning Commission Recommendation on Residential Regulations. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. I'm Carol Helen, the Planning and Community Development Director, and tonight, as part of the city's Redmond Twenty-Fifty work, Planning and Community Development staff are presenting the Planning Commission's recommendation for housing regulations, or residential regulations, I'm sorry. The Planning Commission report, together with the exhibits and appendices, are provided in your packet materials, and this recommendation is scheduled for incorporation into the full packet of regulatory updates that will be presented to council in October prior to adoption. Tonight, staff will summarize the key components of the Planning Commission's recommendation and seek council input on questions and topics you would like to discuss during the study session that is scheduled for June eleventh, and again, on June twenty-fifth, if that is necessary. So I'm joined this evening by Ian Lefcourt and Odra Cardenas, who will provide tonight's staff report, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to Ian. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Hello, councilmembers. So as Director Helen touched on, this really is going to be a conversation about identifying what topics you would like to see further discussed at the upcoming study sessions. Here's a little roadmap of where we've been and where we're going. Residential regulations are a part of the broader Redmond Twenty-Fifty project. And this slide, we're going to spend a little bit of time on, because it really sets the table for what we're hoping to discuss. So the objectives of the residential regulations update do many things. Right off the top, they implement the Housing Action Plan, and this has been part of an ongoing housing discussion going back to twenty twenty, right? As part of the Housing Needs Assessment, the Housing Action Plan, the Redmond Twenty-Fifty efforts associated with community engagement, we've gone, we've done questionnaires, workshops, we've gone to community events like Holly Festivals and Redmond Lights. All of this has fostered this community identification of what matters related to these housing pieces. And so, we've tried to explicitly address many of the strategies and actions that are formally adopted into the Housing Action Plan. Diversify housing stock, strategy three. These residential regulations will implement that. In addition, it also, this package speaks to the broader underpinning of what the housing priorities are for our community. I think one of the biggest pieces that represents that is, if you recall, we had a grant from Commerce, the Middle Housing and Racially Disparate Impacts Grant. And part of that effort was leveraging some of our community advocate partners, Eastside For All, who built relationships with over six hundred and fifty community members about the topic of middle housing. There were many community-based organizations that were vital partners of this, and many of the conversations occurred in languages other than English, they occurred with stakeholders who are not usually brought to the table, and it's one of those demonstrations of how much our community has expressed interest in middle housing. And middle housing is going to pop up a lot in these residential regulations, but there are other pieces to this package as well. Now, the second row is comply with new state law. There has been a bunch of housing state law over the last few years. The residential regulations package addresses those, and in some cases goes above and beyond. For example, in that middle housing, state law, House Bill eleven-ten really is the kind of middle housing bill, and our efforts go above and beyond what is required, because the law actually has many different ways that different requirements apply to different jurisdictions. There's three tiers based on population size. It's based on twenty-twenty population, so we were kind of between tiers, and so we just said, well, let's, let's go above and beyond to where we know we will be. In addition, there was various minimum dwelling unit per lot requirements based on other factors, like your proximity to transit. Redmond chose to go above and beyond all of this, make the dwelling units by right six per lot, because, as we go to the third row, that helps streamline permitting review. It creates equity in lots across the city, it facilitates development review, it helps external customers know what they can do with their property, because it won't just, you know, cut off if you're one block too far from a transit stop, and it will hopefully create the opportunity for more of these housing outcomes to occur. The last thing I want to mention about the streamlining the permit review process is that when you reviewed your package, you probably saw a bunch of red lines to the code. The overall approach that staff took was removing barriers to the middle housing that Redmond already allows. You can already make duplexes, you can already make triplexes. It's just there were often code and policy barriers that made those plausible. So the approach has been to pull some of that back, and so of the forty or so code sections that are identified as having proposed amendments, nearly a third of them are simple repeals, because the content is now being covered in our new neighborhood residential zoning district, or neighborhood multifamily zoning district. And then many of the other edits are just kind of administrative cleanups, such as updating references to those now deleted zoning districts. So like R four pops up in a lot of zoning sections, so then we need to amend and clean up all those references. So that's the overall approach there. The intent is to provide flexibility. In addition to the zoning code amendments, this package also creates amendments to the zoning map. We are consolidating our numerous residential districts into, the ones that are identified there are condensed into two. Importantly, semi-rural is staying semi-rural, so RA five is still RA five, but R one through R eight will now be neighborhood residential, and R twelve through R thirty is proposed to be neighborhood multifamily. In addition, just as kind of a project management administrative cleanup, we're also consolidating overlake districts. There's five currently, there's proposed three. The majority of that discussion actually occurred in a different package, but the, the actual map amendments were not included with that, so we're just tying up that loose end. And then finally, we also had to adopt pre-annexation zoning for our potential annexation areas. Those are those areas out of city limits, and we needed to make sure that they aligned with that pre-annexation zoning, so now they are also aligned. And if we go one level up from the zoning districts, we're also proposing in the land use element, changing the land use designations. Those are kind of the higher bucket that contains the little pieces of the individual zoning districts. Instead of having single-family constrained, single-family urban, multifamily urban, we are now proposing one land use designation of neighborhood, which will contain those three zoning districts, under the Twenty-Fifty consistent zoning, neighborhood residential, neighborhood multifamily, those are before you tonight, and neighborhood mixed use is proposed for drafting and development later. But the notion is that if it's all under one land use designation, it allows property owners, much less onerous, public process, to seek and obtain rezoning. So in that way, we're trying to reduce some barriers. I will also mention that Odra has developed an incredible story map that has like a before and after of the zoning map, in addition to a bunch of other really good information about this effort. We will include a link to that in your package for the upcoming study session. This mainly serves as just a high-level reminder of what we just discussed. What would change and what would stay the same? The biggest change is a combination of our zoning consolidation and that second bullet under significant changes, which is that dwelling units will be measured per lot. Historically, in American planning, the metric is typically dwelling units per acre, and so per lot actually kind of throws a curveball at you, because a lot can be many different sizes. So we had to come up with some creative solutions to provide more guardrails for the development standards, to make sure that it accomplished what our community wants for a wide range of lot sizes. So the proposal has up to six dwelling units per lot, baseline, and then up to eight if some additional affordability requirements are met. Those affordability requirements are still being developed in our collaboration with Arch. We're doing financial modeling to figure out the precise best approach to ensure that we're getting affordable affordability outcomes, while also ensuring that we're not creating barriers to the middle housing actually being- that we're not creating barriers to the middle housing actually being developed. Staying the same, let's start with allowing single-family detached homes. We'll still be able to come in and create a detached, single-family home. And the last point there, the design standards still apply. They have been revised for middle housing. Instead of taking an approach where each of the nine middle housing typologies gets their own set of regulations, their own set of design standards, what we've tried to do is create a more flexible approach, where whatever the unique considerations are of your lot, and the unique considerations of your desired housing outcomes, as long as you work within the overall paradigm and framework of the kind of bookends of design standards, you can realize a variety of different typologies, all under the same process. So if you wanted to do a duplex and two cottages, you would have the same application of standards and design considerations as you would as if you wanted to do four townhomes. It's all about giving flexibility to make sure each lot can best serve that unique condition. That was a lot of content, and that was mainly on the middle housing portion, the neighborhood residential zone. And I will transfer to Odra to discuss the neighborhood multifamily.
Thank you, Ian. Good evening, Council members and Major Burney. So, can you go to the next slide? So, for the neighborhood multifamily, what is changing? The main things that are changing is, of course, we're consolidating six zonings that are currently in the zoning map into one. And the density is not going to be measured as dwelling units per acre. It's going to be measured by floor area ratio, which I put this little graphic in there to understand what it means. So, taking all the floor areas and divided by the side area. That's how we're going to be measuring density for this zoning district. And we put a base of 60, .68 FAR, which is the equivalent of 30 units per acre, with a minimum density of .44. And what's staying the same, all the other regulations for the zoning district is going to stay as R30 right now. Go to the next slide. So, there was a robust discussion on all these topics with the Planning Commission, and there were two recommendations that changed basically on the neighborhood residential side. And this were related to the lot coverage, and also to the maximum square footage for one dwelling unit, and we will go over this in the next slides. And all those changes are in your packet, and also the matrix of, the issues matrix that we went over with them, and you can read all the discussion in there. Can we go to the next slide? So, for the lot coverage, the Planning Commission recommended that we increase the lot coverage from 50% to 60% when the lots are 18,000 square feet or less, and also if they contain more than two units, so three units and up. And the lot coverage is like the footprint on the parcel. Can we go to the next slide? And this was another of the big changes. We developed this table to set a maximum total square footage for the structures in the lots, and you get more depending on how many units you put in there. And this is to incentivize more units in the lots. So, the change that they did was in the single family, so in one, if you only have one structure in your lot, we had proposed 4,500 square feet, and they proposed 4,900 square feet. So, these were the two big changes, and we put them also into your packet. And the next slide. So, the next steps, we have those two study sessions on June 11 and June 25. And we are going to be preparing all this packet to be adopted in the fall of 2024. And, next slide. So now, we're going to take all your issues or questions and put them in a matrix, and we can discuss at June 11.
Thank you both very much. Ian, would you mind stopping, sharing the screen, so they can, the viewing audience can see you too? Are there any questions or ideas for the matrix that's coming up in our study sessions? Would it be easier if I just called everyone in order? And I'm going to start down at the end with Councilmember Anderson. Do you have any ideas for the matrix? Okay. I mean, that's a movie, but you know what I mean. Councilmember, no, thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina, do you have anything to add for our study session?
I do not.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, I do. So, first of all, thank you so much, Ms. Cardenas and Mr. Lefcourt. It's awesome to have you here. And as we know, it's not this week, I think, but often you are here late with us on Tuesday nights, and then you're back with the Planning Commission Wednesday night. So, thank you for all your work. I have a few questions for the study sessions. First, I'll mention that earlier tonight, through the clerk, the council received a question from a member of the public asking about lot splitting. I believe that I actually saw it in there because I saw it as an exception. But if you could address that specifically, that would be great. My big picture question on the residential piece of it all is, not just are we allowing middle housing in the same way that we're allowing single-family housing, but are we kind of making it even easier and more exciting to build middle housing than single-family housing? And I heard some of that from you tonight, Mr. Lefcourt, but if there's anything that maybe we didn't get a chance to dive into, I'd love to hear more on that. I see that the conversation on inclusionary zoning for these two neighborhood types is incomplete, and so it would be great to hear a bit more about the timing of that. And one of the housing types that's come to my attention lately through talking with community groups is how homes in our traditionally single-family neighborhoods make great places for adult family homes. And so, when we're talking about the sizing restrictions and requirements of all of these, I just want to make sure, I don't know what the traditional square footage is, per se, of an adult family home, but I do want to make sure that that is a housing type we continue to preserve and promote here in the city of Redmond. And on that, I would love to hear more about the decision and the conversation related to the 4,900, excuse me, 4,900 square feet. My concern here is, when I first glance at it, is that by allowing for larger, we're allowing for more multi-car garages that are maybe inconsistent with some of the other values that we're putting forward in the plan. So, I would love to hear more about that. And lastly, I just want to be absolutely sure. I believe the answer is pretty clear because we've reviewed the information on the centers and the policies that are going to be moving forward for the centers. But I did just want to double-check with you all that the centers, as they were identified on this map in white, are not going to be receiving the neighborhood multifamily land use designation because they are, in fact, regulated by a different set of policies. And I just wanted to clarify that for everyone, if that is the case. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Slahudin?
Yep. Thank you. Really appreciate the presentation. One of my questions was sort of, you know, a little bit on what Councilmember Stewart just mentioned with the 4,900 maximum square footage. I wanted to know if there was information or data that you had that showed how many current structures we have that are 4,900 square feet or larger. And so that would just be interesting to know. The other question that I had was specifically the density measurement, two-floor area ratio, and how, sorry if I missed it in the report, but how we got to that recommendation versus building units per acre. So, would love to just get a little more information there. Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. A lot of the similar comments have already come up. Also interested to hear more about the 4,500 to 4,900 square foot change. It feels counterintuitive to what we've been putting forward. So, interested to hear some more data on that from you all, and why you chose the 4,500 number. And through the report, I haven't quite seen the rationalization for the upping from the commission, so would love to hear more on that one. Interested also in the lot splitting idea. I know there was a bill that died in session about lot splitting, but it was real close. At least I know, I think it passed on the House side. So, definitely interested in hearing how that's being applied. It looks like maybe the six houses per lot is kind of our way of doing a lot splitting, but I'm interested to know if that includes purchasing options for those six different houses, if that comes to fruition on that particular lot. And then, as well as looking at, there was some confusion for me going through the PowerPoint of when these would go into effect, because it mentioned 2030, and I don't think that's right. I think these go into effect as soon as we, like a month after we sign them, or maybe the following year. So, just some clarity on that would be good. And that is all for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I've been an advocate for a study and an evaluation of this for some time, at least the past five years. So, I'm grateful that the city's addressing this. I've got two topics that I would like to understand in the study session better, or at least sometime in the future, and that is the impacts. I mean, there is a reason why for so many years, we didn't cover all of our land with structures. And part of that reason is the impact on stormwater runoff and other environmental impacts. So, I would like to know what we're thinking, what we think the impacts might be, or when we'll look at that. And then the other impact is levels of service. As we create density in some of these parts of our city that didn't have that level of density, what are we going to do about transportation and some of the other impacts in our structured environment? So, that's my, those are my two questions. Those are the things I would like to understand better. And thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. A lot of good questions and comments from my colleagues, so I won't double up, although I will add one more onto the pile of the 4,500 to 4,900 change, which is just kind of thinking about the question around how we think about our existing kind of more affordable housing stock, and how that gets turned over when new housing gets built on places where older housing exists, even for single-family homes. Not to say that they're, a lot of them are super affordable, but may become less so if you build an even larger, newer house on top of where an older construction was. So, and how we think about that, that piece in the context of that discussion. I was also really interested in the solid waste and, solid waste storage and collection section, and was just, and was hoping that during the study session, we could highlight that for the public, since I think that's something that we get a lot of questions about, is what we can do to be able to address that, especially in terms of our guidelines in the neighborhood multifamily aspects. So, that was of interest to me. Really interested to read about some of the ways that we are going to be facilitating, you know, getting more missing middle housing with some of the shifts around design guides. But I am interested during the study session to be able to understand better, since I think the parts keep moving around. As you mentioned, it's been moved over to a different section, perhaps in the matrix. You can link to us where those existing design guidelines now exist, because it does look like pages and pages of taking out, you know, neighborhood-specific design guidelines. So, I think being able to look at what is going to be there as the type of design guidelines that will be there would be helpful. And I think in particular, kind of since a lot of the pieces that have the lines through them are things around, like open space, play areas, and habitats, but I think that exists now somewhere else. So, that would be helpful to be able to see. And just to understand kind of what do we think of, especially in terms of place-making tools throughout our city, and what we think about in terms of the designs for our neighborhoods, which may be part of the new element that we're building, but how that relates to thinking about residential. And, you know, is the vision, for example, for us to have, you know, the ability for a lot of our neighborhoods to have similar structures go up, or for there to still be kind of a look-or-feel that is different? What do you anticipate? So, that would be a question I would love to discuss. And then, I think last, I noted that the, I noted that there was also a note about that the Transfer of Development Rights slash Open Space Program has been deleted in light of Upzone, and would love to get a little more clarity on why we would be moving out of taking advantage of the benefit of that program. So, which I think is more a process-related thing, but would love to get some more information on that. And I think that's all. Thanks.
Well, thank you all. I think we covered a lot. Thank you both very much, and to your team as well. And we look forward to our study session on the, starting on the 11th. Is that correct? Was there anything else for this evening that you'd like to share?
Thank you for your interest and passion.
Thank you both very much. Our next item of business is OnBUDS Report. For the month of May, we have Councilmember Nueva Camina, and for the month of June, we have Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Nueva Camina, do you want to finish up May?
We are finishing up May. We had another wonderful letter from one of the seventh graders from Redmond Middle School with concerns about robust, having more robust recycling program and stricter rules. So, I'm sure that they would love to be listening in to our study session when we're talking about that for 2050. General Manager, on behalf of residents in, in support of the inaugural Tourism Strategic Plan, continued showing of support of that inaugural strategic plan, increasing, folks come into seeing our city from more than 50 miles away. Questions specific to various fundraisers, and what the rules are around that. So, I'm still working on getting details, and will be returning that in this coming week. Working on a solution, continued working on a solution for parking around mailboxes near Redmond High School. So, we are working with planning on that, and also checking out to see if there's possibly a city ordinance that we need to change, if that is going to be the answer. Apparently, there has been quite a lot of activity around our tennis and pickleball courts, and folks wanting to know if those can be reserved. And unfortunately for those listening, those are not able to be reserved. However, do reach out to parks for that. And exciting news for our region, for our neighbors to the north, is the Everett Rowing Association, both the youth girls and youth boys teams have qualified for nationals, and will be attending that this particular week.
Great. Thank you so much. I do have a little bit of follow-up about the parking in front of mailboxes. So, our team has been researching what needs to be done. We do not think at this time there needs to be a new ordinance, but we're, more to come on that, and Public Works is handling it. So, as soon as we have more finite details, we will share with all of you and our community member who's been very frustrated when people park in front of their mailbox, which I understand. It happens on my street as well. So, thank you for following up with that. More to come. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'll start with the ones for the council, and then just add on my personal ones. We don't have to double back. We received an email this morning with a concern regarding the impact of permanent supportive housing's impact on local businesses. I shared with that resident a little bit about the work underway between Plymouth and the business community, and One Redmond, and the business walks that are taking place. And also shared with that resident that council will be meeting again with Plymouth at our July 16 business meeting, and committed to that resident to raise the issue once again when we're here with Plymouth. There was an announcement from the city about registration for National Night Out on August 6. If your neighborhood's planning to attend, planning to host a block party, and would like to have a visit from, say, a fire truck, or someone else really cool, then please register by July 23. And I wanted to share that council received a dispatch with the Arch Strategic Plan, a regional coalition for housing, the new strategic plan under the auspices of Build More Affordable Housing Faster. For planning geeks like myself, it's pretty clear that Arch used, and the board used, a real-time strategic planning approach, which pairs the current needs of the community and the current times with the strategic assets of the organization. And I'm highlighting this, A, so I hope that my fellow council members will read the plan, but also, I've been involved in a lot of community conversation lately about, why doesn't Arch add navigation services? Why doesn't Arch do X, Y, or Z related to rent issues in our city, and things like that? And I think, taking a look at the plan, it's really clear that Arch is laser-focused on making sure that it's able to achieve what it's set out to do, and to do it as best that it can, as quickly as it can. I was having a conversation with folks
I was having a conversation with folks from the, who are going to be opening up the crisis care centers with Council Vice President Forsyth. They have an interest in having a presentation to our council, maybe during special orders of the day. Council President, Vice President Forsyth is working on the scheduling of that. It would be great for Redmond residents to be able to hear a bit more about the services that are going to be available in our neighboring city. I met with Mr. Yoder regarding questions about development on Cleveland, health through housing, and how residents there will be cared for, and the Plymouth development. I met with a resident who had feedback and suggestions for our invitation to the school boards to come meet us in a joint session. That resident also followed up with an email to the whole council with an invitation to come and volunteer at Redmond Elementary. I'm supporting a resident who reached out to me regarding their current housing instability. I was able to refer them to navigation services at Together Center and asked our staff for any other resources that might fit this particular circumstance. I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's annual general assembly with Mayor Bernie, and I just wanted to report back to the council that transportation safety, multimodal transportation, and our work on the Safe Streets for All program were certainly highlights of that conversation. And for the resident who came to speak to us today about Northeast 24th, it's the Safe Streets for All program that we're going to get back to and get to a shopping list of great safety measures we can take here in the city. I also participated in the National Trail Day event on Saturday at Jewel Park. Just wanted to thank the entire team, including Cameron Zapata and three generations of the Tuchek family, a bunch of planning commissioners, excuse me, a planning commissioner, some parks commissioners, parks commission alum and community. Nearly 1,300 feet of trail were covered in about 40 yards of hog fuel, which is made out of cedar shavings. It's not related to pigs. And so that was a really beautiful event. And yesterday, we raised the pride flag in front of Redmond City Hall, and I had a visitor to my office hours to discuss public safety services for when the light rail is fully opened next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Ombuds items for this evening? Council President, and then Councilmember Slahudin?
Yeah, I spoke with a resident at length about some of the issues going on, especially in our local elementary schools, and some of the needs that they're facing there, and seeing around, especially with the changes in demographics in our community and growing needs, and kind of just shared a little bit with that resident. I also met with the church that's right next to Anderson Park with their board to talk with them about the Plymouth Housing Project, and also just to be able to gather some of their feedback about things going on in the community, and we had a great conversation about that and just overall about our approach to housing in the city, as well as other types of issues going on around the area. And just want to say thanks to them for inviting me to talk with them. I also went to, I also went to the mayor's State of the City and had a lot of great conversations with residents and especially businesses at that, thanks to One Redmond for hosting that, or organizing that. It was really a great opportunity to be able to connect with community, and especially to have all of our small businesses featured at that event, and just got to hear from so many interesting small businesses in our community about the different issues that they're facing as well, and their feedback on how the city is able to support them, as well as One Redmond. And then finally, I also was able to attend the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, their annual walk, along with Councilmember Slahudin and a bunch of other leaders from the region. It was great to be able to connect with others and talk about a lot of the issues around supporting mental health in our communities, and appreciate the work that that organization, especially NAMI Eastside, does in our community. And lastly, I just wanted to note for those who attend my office hours that this month, due to some scheduling issues, I'm going to do office hours only by appointment, and I'll be posting that also on my social media, but will be resuming with the drop-in hours next month, and I may be moving location to the Redmond Senior Community Center, so stay updated on that. But I will be sharing out that information with all of the regulars, as well as out on social media, but wanted to note that for this month, don't drop by at the drop-by hours, but feel free to email me if you'd like to talk one-on-one. Love having those one-on-one conversations. Thanks.
Thank you, and thanks for mentioning the State of the City. We had a few technical issues that day. However, due to Chip, who runs these meetings, he's hiding in the back, but he is a magician, and he did his magic and put together the version online. It went out in the e-news yesterday, and so if anyone attempted to watch it and it didn't quite work for you, for them, if they're in person, or if you have about 25 minutes or so, you can watch it online. And I'm really proud of all the work the city's done in the last year or so, and very grateful to Chip for sorting out all the technical issues. So thank you, Chip. Next, we have Councilmember Slahudin.
Thank you. It's been a pretty busy past few weeks, specifically in youth engagement. And so I met with one of the youth speakers, he's a college student from the two-line opening, and met with him and talked about those last mile options for the two-lines, specifically for students in our area commuting to and from UW and other colleges. Met with some youth ambassadors from the Redmond area who were talking about their youth climate initiatives and what they would like to see, not just in Redmond, but across our state as well. And then I actually had the opportunity to be a keynote speaker at the Evergreen Model United Nations event this past weekend with 100 or so middle schoolers and high schoolers, and talked to a lot of them, many of which were in the Lake Washington School District, but talked to them about opportunities within our city and other cities, and getting involved early on in their middle school and high school careers, so that, you know, there's opportunities for them to learn about the process, and I mentioned RYPAC as well. And then finally, not necessarily a youth engagement opportunity, but spoke with Pearl from Amazon regarding Project Kuiper and the space district in Redmond, Redmond's future focus on that initiative.
Thank you. Any other Ombuds items? All right. Seeing none, next we have committee reports. Any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Well, last week, we had a busy time at the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting. We had an update on the Redmond Senior and Community Center, hearing about how things are going and how staff is doing a phenomenal job. And we also had an update on our recreation fee assistance program. There had been some questions on that. We also got to hear, everyone is excited about the 2024 Derby Days overview and where things stand with Derby Days coming up, and on our environmental sustainability action plan update. As a city, we've been quite busy on that over the past, during this past year. We had a pedestrian bicycle advisory committee hosted the Transit Open House on May 13. They were able to talk about accessing light rail, different transit options in Redmond and Transit and Orca cards, the Energy Smart Eastside Fuel Switch incentive, Department of Energy, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, and how we are leading by example as a city around climate resiliency and sustainability and vegetation management education, that's a mouthful, and regional greenhouse gas inventory article, and very excitingly about our fleet electrification. Over the past five months, we've had six new electric vehicles have been added to the city's fleet, including our Ford lighting pickup trucks.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. As some who, some who follow the council may have heard, we established some new subcommittees this year. One on flexible transit and first-last-mile issues is with myself and Council President Kritzer and Council Vice President Forsyth. We had our first meeting last week. It was super productive and got us pretty focused on the next year or so in preparing for the arrival of light rail. Earlier today, we had the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We discussed a new inter-local agreement with the city of Bellevue to cost-share with road repairs and ADA improvements at 148th Avenue and Northeast 40th. We will be adding this project to our CIP and be partnering with Bellevue to do that. We also advanced two other Public Works projects. Since there's interest in the audience, I'll say that one of them is on Northeast 24th Street, and it is the repairs between 172nd and West Lake Sammamish Parkway. So we moved some work on that to our June 18 consent agenda. We also previewed our staff report on the Transportation Master Plan, which will be on our July 16 business meeting. I serve on the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priority Committee. We have our next meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. The Statement of Policy Committee has now completed their work, and I shared the Statement of Policy draft with the council for their review. It will be discussed at the upcoming annual business meeting of the Association of Washington Cities. And I am, was recently appointed to the One Redmond Government Affairs Committee. This month, they had an update from Nicole McDonald on our staff about upcoming city events and how One Redmond members can be engaged, including in Derby Days. They received a quarterly update on Redmond 2050. There was lots of interest from the committee on engagement opportunities and future conversations on MFTE, multifamily tax exemptions. They received an update from Director Cochran on city finances and the budget process. A piece of that conversation that might be of interest to council is the heads-up that the CIP for the next biennium is going to be proposed to us with a bit of shift in the policy framing, so looking forward to that conversation. The committee also reviewed the results of their board's advocacy priorities survey, much of which the city is the target of. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
Thank you. Yes, just we, adding on, we had the first meeting of the subcommittee that was initially around bike pedestrian, but we have added flexible transit to it, so we are talking about that upfront, and hopefully we'll get to the bike ped portion of it soon as well. We also today had our first subcommittee for the Alternative Crisis Response Subcommittee, which is myself, Councilmember Nueva Camina, and Councilmember Slahudin. We had a great conversation, went pretty quickly, found out that staff is meeting tomorrow with the racer folks to get some questions answered, so we will be eagerly anticipating hearing the results of that conversation and moving forward accordingly. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, there is no unfinished business, there is no new business, there is no executive session. That concludes the business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all.